Couple other items here. We are into the season where we have yard waste pickup that will continue on Fridays, scheduled right now, at least through November. Couple of just things to keep in mind. Yard waste consists typically of grass clippings, leaves, small branches, not in excess of three feet long or four inches in diameter. If they are bigger than that, please cut them down. Makes it easier for the guys to get them. Bundle, arm loads of bundles, so it's not like a, you know, like a huge stack that they have to disassemble. Don't mix the yard waste with mulch, dirt, residential refuse, or anything, pet waste, things of that nature. Please put those out Thursday evenings. And then all yard waste should be placed in either a craft paper bag or a container, no plastic bags. I bet they gotta stand there and empty the plastic bags out. As all have, I'll turn it over to the town administrator.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and Council members of the audience and the community. We'll go ahead and start with the April 2016 administrative report. Under the pending S H A projects, there's been no change to the Route 27 and Route 30 intersection project. Actually, the Route 27 widening project out near Westminster Street is gaining some movement. Our public works folks had a meeting with them, with S H A, in regards to the water main relocation out there last week. The second pending issue, the Sheets project, I spoke to Mike LaCissa, who is a real estate person with Sheets, and it appears that Sheets is getting closer to the purchase of a small piece of property behind the existing store from the Board of Education. We have a meeting with Sheets' folks next Monday, the 16th, at 1:45 here at Town Hall. If anybody's interested in attending, you're more than welcome. Also, the town did receive a case closure letter from M D E on April the 15th in regards to the M T B E issue, which is now closed, with the exception of during construction of the new facility. If anything comes about, the case will be reopened. Our new Town Hall and Police Station, we had a progress meeting today. That project is approximately forty, forty-six percent complete. We have had a few issues along the way here in the last month. One issue that does bother me a little bit is, of course, Verizon is out on strike, and that could be an issue with our phone service. We're trying to look at different other avenues we can take to get phone service into the building when we open up. We also had one other issue, the sound system in the Training Council meeting room, which we have to overcome that. That was, that was missed along the way, and we have a meeting tomorrow with the subcontractor who's doing the cabling for us. So I'll give you more information as time goes on. I'm gonna turn everything over to Kelly right now in regards to the financing. We did contact Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development, and she has some pretty good information in regards to that, in regards to the financing of our new building. So Kelly, I'll turn it over to you.
Well, as you know, we have been researching to see what we can do as far as financing in order to not put out all the cash, and in the event that there is something that we would have to take care of, whether it be a problem with a storm drain collapsing or, you know, something happened with roads, we would have that cash available to us. So we had met with banks, and most recently Steve had a meeting, sort of a meeting with the Department of Housing and Community Development. And if you remember, we did a loan with them when we did our water main back in 98, and we went to the bond market as a class, and I think that was about a $400,000 loan at the time. The same program is in effect, and we have information. We can, we're getting paperwork together. We're having a meeting, a conference on Friday with our attorney and their bond council attorney to go over the documents to see, make sure everybody's on board with, with the documents that would be required. And at this point, the interest rate would be 1.85 for 10 years, and based on the loan amount, they're looking to almost no closing costs if things were to settle this week or so forth. We are looking probably in July. When we met with him two weeks ago, I think the rate was around two, and then when we met with him Monday, Friday?
Yes.
It was 1.85. So what you'll be getting is just the information on the intent to reimburse ourselves as well, if we would like to do that. And at that rate, I think that we could look into that. So he'll be getting the information when I get more on Friday with our attorney and their attorney. I'll be turning it over to you all and let you know what's going on.
Okay.
Okay, we'll continue on under miscellaneous items. The Russian yard waste site, the town did receive our grading permit from Carroll County. The stabilization fence has been installed, and eighty percent of the area has been seeded and stabilized. Under Project Open Space Funding, we did put our application in. That was submitted. The Sustainable Communities Work Group meeting, that's scheduled for next Wednesday, May the 18th, at 10:00 a.m. here at Town Hall. The W R C C meeting will be here on May 25th at 2:30, and after our meeting, we will take a tour of the spray irrigation facility. Also, I want to remind you that the C C Visa Convention will be held here in Manchester this coming Saturday, May 14th. If you can make it, it's a very nice event. Manchester hosts it this year. We put a lot of time and effort into this, so I think it's pretty interesting if you'd like to attend. Okay, moving along, the April 2016 Public Works Report. You have in front of you the monthly Water and Waste Water Status Report for April. The rehabilitation of the Patricia Court Pumping Station is complete. The hydrant flushing took place on April 29th with no issues. Under Waste Water, we started the rehab of both the north and the south wastewater pumping station. On April 28th, I want to thank Donnie Knott, our Director of Public Works, and also Ted Reed, our Waste Water Supervisor. We had 20 participants across the East Coast come in and tour our spray irrigation facility. And this is in regards to a pilot program with the University of Maryland in which a designated area will be used to see what effect the treated final effluent has on numerous plants and vegetables actually using the effluent as the water source. They were very impressed. They'll probably want an area of about five to 10 acres. There will be a filtration system put on to the effluent before it's used for the irrigation. But it's pretty interesting, and I've always, you know, kind of thought, hey, what effect would it have on, you know, vegetables and plants that are consumed by humans? And now if we get into this pilot program, we'll actually see what effect it does have. So that's pretty interesting to me. On the week of the, week of May 23rd, we will have a centrifugal sludge press demo at the wastewater treatment plant. Later on in that week, that Thursday and Friday, the plant's gonna be open to neighboring other jurisdictions where they're gonna be coming in and tour the, not really tour the plant, but actually see the sludge press in operation. So it's a demo from Inbi Rep is the company that's coming in and setting up the demo for us. Under Stormwater, there's been no change at the Skate Park Stormwater Facility, and I keep referring to that as the Skate Park. It's actually the Route 27 Stormwater Management Facility. I have to change that up a little bit. The Whispering Valley Stormwater Management Facility retrofit, the county reps and I met with the border and property owners on April 20th to answer any questions regarding the project. I believe we had about six, six homeowners out there, and they're pretty happy with what we're doing. The biggest portion of that job is the open cut of Maryland Route 30, right there by Thomas Tree Farm. I believe there's two 52-inch pipes that are gonna be installed there, and it can only be done open cut, and that's gonna be a traffic nightmare. But that's two years down the road, so be prepared for that. Our folks, we're about 60% complete on the replacement of a deteriorated storm drain pipe off of Southwestern Boulevard. So that takes care of the stormwater. Under Maintenance Roads and Parks, our spring street repaving projects have been completed. Also, under our new skate park location off of Water Street, the pad is complete. Donnie Knott, Dave Brennan, and I met with Tyler Anderson. Tyler is the young man that came in a few months ago and wanted to get involved. So we met with Tyler. Tyler's putting together a design for the ramp locations at the new site, and work will probably begin later this month on the rehab of the existing ramps that we currently have. So Tyler's been a big help to us, so we're pretty happy with him. He's teaching three old men what the names of the different ramps are, because we had no clue what that was. But he's gonna tell us where they go, and we're gonna rebuild them and go from there. So that's it for my report. Any questions for me?
No actual items in there, right Steve?
No action items this evening, no, sir.
Steve, the new skate park, are we reusing all ramps? Is there anything else we can purchase in addition, or is everything gonna?
Yes, I believe we did put some monies into the fiscal year 17 budget to enhance the, with some more ramps up there. So we're, we're trying to build off of that each year if we can.
Hey Steve, that centrifuge sludge press demo sounds really tempting. Is that something to get on the website? See if there's anything in the community else to go?
I think I've been there. John and I, Chief and I toured that one day. We're, I think we're good on that.
Yeah, I have no desire to go back.
It's been a long time since I've been down there.
Actually, we, we currently, of course, have a belt filter press, but this is a new technology that's out. I've seen this in operation before. We did put in a budget. We're working on a three-year plan to replace our belt filter press, and this may be some, something we're gonna look at very hard. But I'm more interested in the other project, the spray irrigation facility. That, that just fascinates me, and I've always thought, you know, what effect would the treated effluent have on, you know, vegetables consumed by humans? And we'll see what happens.
I'm gonna let you handle that and make all the decisions, don't I trust you?
Hey, I'm good with that, so.
Yeah, I'd also prefer to see what happens rather than experience what happens.
But that was, that's a good project, too. And we're teamed up with University of Maryland on that, so.
All right. Anything else for town administrator? All right, Chief, please support.
Yes, sir. Good evening, everybody. It was a pretty quiet month. We had 60 calls for service. We did have two Part I crimes. Both were reported as break-ins. Both are suspicious in nature. We have our doubts on the facts that were reported to us. They are open investigations. We did arrest and criminally charge four persons. One was for DUI, one was for an unrelated traffic incident, one was for burglary and resisting arrest, and one juvenile was arrested for narcotics. We had 73 traffic stops. Thirty state citations were issued, 43 warnings were issued. We're still having a problem on Main Street, Halle, and Charmel, as well as Long Lane, especially this time of year when the warm weather starts to happen, the school gets out, the kids like to go up and down Long Lane, it gets a little dicey there with cars speeding and everything else. Year-to-date, we had six Part I crimes in comparison to three last year, which was an all-time low. But three of the Part I crimes, we report everything. If it's a questionable theft or a questionable burglary, we really don't argue it. We report it to U C R, and we deal with it. If it turns out to be false in nature, then we'll report it back to U C R and clean it up. But we don't, we don't, we don't hide crimes, per se. We report it. Also, we had a successful opening day for Manchester baseball. It was a good parade, it was a good turnout, there was a lot of kids. There was more kids this year than last year. Steve had front row seats.
There's a lot.
Also, during this period, we had a officer of ours who successfully completed firearms instructor training school. Once he completes the field training part of that, he will be a Maryland Police Training Qualified Firearms Instructor, which will save us time and training and cost. He may also be L O S A qualified as well, for any retired officers in the room. One of the big problems we're still having is overdoses across the county. We haven't had any in Manchester lately. Last year, this period, there was 59 overdoses. This year, there's been 106. Last year, we had 20 heroin overdoses. This year, we have had 44. Last year, we had one fatality. This year, we have five fatalities. So the numbers are definitely going up. And unfortunately, with the overdoses, there's also crime that follows. I did attach a map for the council. It's a crime prediction map, and they're, what they do is they base this on reported crime, and it's a time probability, and they create hotspots. And as you can see here, you have one, two, three, four, or four hotspots. The main areas are Hampstead and, is that, what is that?
Is that Westminster?
Area five, Council one.
It looks like Westminster, all four.
Westminster, Westminster and down towards Finksburg. So they're having some problems down through there. Most of it's drug-related, but then with the drug problem, it becomes burglary problems, theft problems, and it continues from there. That's about it. Now, I do have one sad note, I don't know if everybody does know. Prior to me coming here, there was an Officer Charles High Miller. He was with the Manchester P D, I believe, for, what?
Three or two, three years.
Three years. Prior to that, he did 30 years in the Baltimore P D. He just passed away at the age of 61. I believe it was heart-related. We just got that news today. It was actually in the paper. That's about it.
Certainly, thoughts and prayers to Officer Highmiller's family and friends, yes, first that we've heard of that.
Chief, just out of curiosity, when Officer Warback receives this Qualified Firearms certification, is he just training police, or does he qualify for training for handgun qualification and concealed carry in the state of Maryland?
Just police, just law enforcement. And then on that note, we're gonna try to move towards him also becoming for L O S A, for retired officers. But I think it's just police, because he's certified by the Maryland Police Training Commission.
I'm just curious.
Now, if you wanted tips and all, he could handle that.
Chief, you wanna say anything now, or do you have any more information about the award ceremony at Carroll Community College?
Well, I did submit Officer Warback. What happened is, last year, the Carroll County Community College, the Criminal Justice Program, they started a, they like to reward the officers of the county who have done a good job. Last year was our first annual, they're having our second annual. I believe it's gonna be on June 1st at 7:00. It will be at the college in the auditorium, and I submitted Officer Warback to receive that award, and he will be one of the officers in the county who will be receiving that award. Officer Warback's been with us for four and a half years. He was in United States Military for four years. He served overseas. He served on the executive protection and an M P for the United States Navy. And I gotta tell you, he's a, he's a young officer, but when we had crisis intervention team training, he stepped off. He likes to have work with the kids. He likes to work with the people that have mental health issues. If there's training, he wants it. He's constantly wanting to learn. He does a good job, and he's played, he's played a good part here with reducing crime. Last year, your town had the lowest crime in, in the county. So hopefully, we'll get that number one seed in the fall for the safest town in the county. Slakesville beat us out, only by one. So I don't wanna talk about that one, because I personally would vibe with that one.
When is the awards, when is it?
June 1st. June 1st. I'll get the details from the college, hopefully.
Will you send it out to us?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I'll go.
Thank you.
I think last year Steve and I attended, and, yeah, it was pretty nice.
I think I wanna go. I just wanna make sure when it is, so I can put it on my calendar.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything else for the chief? All right. Charter amendment, I guess this is something that came up last month, and you all should have received an email, I think from Kelly's, if I state this wrong, Kelly, correct me on this. So we're required to advertise this charter amendment. We have a charter amendment out there. It's, it's governed how we do business. We're changing the requirements to run for Councilor Mayor from one-year to two-year residency requirement. We introduced that last month. It has to run and be advertised in two papers for four consecutive weeks, or something like that. And the Northern News didn't run one time, so we're gonna hold off on actually adopting that, so that it can, you know, we don't take a chance on doing something procedurally incorrect. And so we'll, we'll table that, with that explanation until June.
Actually, you can, you can do it tonight.
Oh, I misunderstood?
Yeah, that's what I was trying to say, just to.
You can do it tonight, and then that starts the process, but yeah.
I stand corrected. I misunderstood that communication. All right, then we'll discuss a little this. So I guess I'll, I'll read just the changes, the changes, Article 1, Section C 3-2. Council members shall have maintained continuous occupancy of a primary residence in the town for at least, changing from one to two years immediately preceding the election, and shall be qualified voters of the town for at least, again, changing one to two years immediately preceding the election. And then remains unchanged. They shall maintain a permanent domicile in the town during their office. Do we have a motion or discussion to approve the charter amendment?
I make the motion to be approved, Charter Amendment Resolution of 02-2096.
I'll second it.
Motion seconded and a discussion. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, sorry about that, guys. Thank you, Kelly. Could've cut me off earlier. All right, so ordinance 222 relating to the fiscal year 2017 budget, maintains the tax rate of 21.6 cents per hundred dollars of assessed value. Kelly, do you wanna go through some of the highlights here?
Last month, we introduced the general fund budget, as well as, actually, all three funds, general water and sewer. And in the general fund, we were able to propose maintaining the same tax rate as last year. And we do, and I'll go over some of the highlights in the general fund. There are copies available in the back. We have it on our website, and if anybody wants an email, feel free to contact me, we can do that. But basically, some of the highlights of what we look to accomplish again in this year, as you all know, we have started the new Town Hall slash Police Department administrative offices. And so we will continue that from past fiscal year into the new fiscal year. Hopefully, be done by August. And we will still be made for, those of you who are not familiar, we do have a museum in the basement. It is not ADA accessible, so we are going to be remodeling up here, bringing that historic center up here. And then where the police department are located, which was a garage, we turned into a police department, probably about 15 years ago or so. I lose track of time, forgive me. That will, what we would like to do is have that as a community meeting hall for, as Steve has talked about, whether it's Boy Scouts, or if the nature center wants to use it in the wintertime. There are some homeowners associations and so forth that currently go down to senior centers, and if this is something that they would like to be able to use, we would like to work something out for them. It's not big, but it should serve their purpose if it's maybe a little closer. So that is the highlight of, what I would say in the general fund, general fund budget this year, is the new Town Hall. We are looking to continue with the road improvements, and we will continue with the vehicle replacements for some of our older vehicles. There's a police vehicle, 2008, that we will look to replace. 2005, I'm sorry, and so forth. And that is basically the general fund. The next ordinance you have did introduce an increase of the water rates by a quarter. So it would go from $3 per thousand to 3.25. And doing that, we were able to get some capital items funded by the water rates. And some of the big purchases in the water department include upgrades to the Highland Drive and Boffin Road stations. We're buying water correlators, which Steve could tell you a little more about if you have any questions. That's a way of looking for water leaks in the system. When things are quiet, usually in the middle of the night, they're able to hear water running. And then we are looking to upgrade in the sewer fund some items. We are not looking to raise the unit fee on the water bill. It will continue to be $17 per quarter. And we are not looking to raise the sewer rates at all. And by doing that, we will be able to do some purchases in the general, the sewer fund as far as impellers, and they call them muffin monster teeth, some of the big pieces of equipment that help run the sewer treatment plant. But basically, that is the highlight of the two ordinances that you have. One, maintaining the tax rate, and one increasing the water rate by quarter. So someone who has an average bill of, you know, they use 8,000 gallons, that'll be $2 a quarter. That's really, if anybody has any questions, feel free to.
Yeah, I think that's an important point. Kelly, thanks for bridging that gap. We, we talk about tax rates, water rates, and sewer rates ad nauseam for, for months, and, you know, at the end of the day, we have to raise certain amount of money to do things, and to try to come up with an equitable fashion of raising it in an efficient way and meaningful way of, of spending, spending that revenue that comes in. So in the water fund, just due to the way that the nature of taking water out of the ground and getting it to homes has gone, that, that cost has increased pretty drastically over, I'd say, the last decade or so, is that right, Steve?
Yes, correct.
And so the, the water rates haven't kept pace with what it really costs to deliver the water, either in terms of energy, people, chemicals, restrictions. We used to have surface water in town at one point in time. So it's much more expensive to drill these huge wells than maintain this collection of wells. So it's still costing us, I believe the number we discussed was somewhere in the area of $5 per gallon, $5 per thousand gallons to deliver water. So we're trying to bridge that gap a little bit, so we're not robbing Peter to pay Paul from someplace else, because if we're not really covering water with water rates, then we're really covering it with, with, with property taxes or some other kind of fee in order to backfill that amount. So again, I think that, you know, 8,000, you know, a family, like I think mine, I have three, three kids that are teenagers now, we typically use 14, 15, maybe 16,000 gallons. So that'll be $3.75 to $4.00 more a quarter in terms of usage. So that's what I had on, if anybody, you know, I thank this group, the Director of Finance, the Chief, Town Administrator Steve Miller, really, and everybody that works for the town for their inputs, a lot of funneling up of information and aggregating of information to get to the point where we get here. We typically start out hundreds of thousands, hundreds of thousands apart, and then we have to make tough decisions about, you know, what's in, what's out, what can be postponed, what can be done halfway this year, halfway next year, in order to arrive at this point where we have a balanced budget.
I hate to just repeat something you've already said, but, but I wanna say this only because people have approached me on more than one occasion to say to me, oh, so you're raising taxes to build a new Town Hall? And the answer is no, we're not raising taxes to build a new Town Hall. The tax rate is being maintained, and the water is being increased to cover the cost to deliver the water. But we are not raising taxes to build new Town Hall. Because I've been asked by two different people who have approached me and said.
Me, too. And the town is still, what we're trying to do, which I think he said, but just so to reiterate is, and Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, the town is still funding part of the water. So we're trying to catch it up that everybody's technically paying for their own water versus us funding part of your water bill. So hopefully, this progress will help. Okay. And, and to clarify, too, because people see the building and they think, oh, you're allowing the building to take place, and you're increasing this and so forth. Actually, what happens when the developer comes in, we charge them per unit. And we say, your individual units are putting a strain on our infrastructure that we will have to repair. So we do charge them fees. We've been building up this account, these two accounts, that are strictly for water and strictly for sewer. They are not to be commingled. Taxes do not, our water increase is not to pay for that building, it's a separate entity. So we've been going to the savings account that the developer has been, the fees that we've collected, and we've been using those fees to buy some of the capital items. And now we're getting to the point where we don't wanna use all those funds, so we're, like you said, bridging the gap, just for people.
Yeah, I think Councilwoman Walter had a good point, and I don't think we brought that up, at least not tonight, we didn't. But the, the new Town Hall is something that we had in the works, and I think we were, I know Dale and I were here, I don't know if anybody else was here up here, at least at that time. Oh, you were, you were sitting here.
It's like 15 years.
It was a long time ago.
It's been a long time.
And the, we, we have two aging structures that are not efficient and leak water and are not ADA compliant and all of these things. So we, we had reserved money and planned for a long time, even pre-deading us, till about 2007, 2008, when the housing market crashed and the state reduced some funding formulas, excuse me, excuse me, I'm sorry. State reduced some funding formulas, and so we, we pulled the plug on it, and then that money essentially sat, the money that had been reserved sat in savings for a long time. So as times have changed and the, the need to do something has come back up, and the cost of money is very low again, or somewhat still, then we moved in that direction. But it's really, it's not directly tied to, to tax rates, and certainly not the water rates. I think that's a good point. Any other comments on the budget or ordinance 223, which is the water rates? All right. Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance two twenty-two fiscal year seventeen budget.
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number two twenty-two relating to the fiscal year two thousand, two thousand seventeen budget.
I'll second the motion.
Motion second, end of discussion. Any others in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. And then ordinance two twenty-three, increasing water rates by twenty-five cents per thousand gallons from three to three twenty-five. A motion to approve that.
Make the motion that we approve ordinance number two twenty-three, increasing the water rate by twenty-five cents.
I'll second the motion.
Motion second, end of discussion. Any others in favor, signify by, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Anything else on, on budget before we move on? All right, we'll move to questions, comments from the community, if anybody signed in. I know we have some name tags, so. Tracy, do we, do we have a sign-in sheet? Do you want me to read that way or we, or we can have people come up? If you want to start, you can. Do you mind stepping up so that we can, people can hear you at home?
Mayor Warner and council members, I'm Pat Milligan. My wife in the red is Kathy Milligan. The group in here with the name tags, if they're all, just stand up just real quickly.
And sit down.
I think so. We represent the political action committee of the, of the, you can see here, Castlefield fifty-five or better organization. And our main purpose, our main function is a continuing and constructing, constructive relationship with the council. Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly. Is, is anybody else scared to speak?
Come on, I knew we couldn't go without you, come on.
Yeah, I just want to say that support, I think it's great you're building a new town hall. You know, I think it's probably overdue, a new police station, you know, for, glad you all stepped up to make that tough decision, I think, also. But I'm glad to see it in response to your, to certain people coming up to you.
Thank you, thank you.
How many residents do you have all total now in your community? About? Is this the political action committee here, is, how many residents totals in your community?
Well, it's fifty-two have built out, so, you know, we'll probably have close to a hundred. And then there's a, another developers has another, what is it, twelve or sixteen? Nineteen units, nineteen units at the end of Hilltop, you know, will come up, so that'll be another forty, we can give name tags to.
Little more chairs, Steve, we're going, we're going to need more, more chairs.
That's right, voters.
How many?
Old people do that.
Make sure they all register to vote, that's one a year.
Oh, yeah.
How many units are occupied now?
We've got, it's fifty, they're not occupied, let's say, there's, okay, three short, forty-nine, forty-seven, I think forty-seven.
They're pretty close to build out, huh?
Okay.
Do, do we know, Steve, we heard from the Hilltop? Any timeframe on that?
We've spoken to them for the last three months, so they're moving slowly on that. They did, they did do some grading up there, they did, did some sediment control tests up there, but it's going slowly.
Good. Anybody else from the community? No? Okay. We'll move to committee reports. Councilman Smith?
I have a meeting on Thursday night with cable commission, so hopefully I'll have some more updates next.
Where, where does that stand with that ninety and sixty day thing?
Franchise.
Yeah.
We extended it until June 1st for the, for it to be, all the towns have, have approved by word of mouth, but we're supposed to vote on Thursday and then approve it. So franchise agreement hopefully after, Vince, ten years?
Yes.
Will be approved. It's been a grueling process, but hopefully be settled.
Okay. Community improvement, projects, educational outreach, Councilman Miller?
All right, we are still working on Banner City, that's due at the end of the month, we're waiting on a couple more verifications to sign off on that, to be able to submit it. We are gathering all the documents and it looks like we're in good shape for that. We just have to make a couple copies, so that will be submitted. I had sent in letters to all of the fourth grade teachers, the principals and assistant principals at both Ed Valley and Manchester encouraging the children to do the If I Were Mayor for a Day or If I Were Mayor essay contest. So we reached out to that and later this week, I am going to a fourth grade classroom to discuss local government and just kind of give ins and outs about that. That particular class is heading to Annapolis next week to visit the state house, so it ties in perfectly with giving them idea on, on the local government aspect. Also, town office will have a scholarship opportunity. It's a new scholarship that's just started. It opens to any senior of a Carroll County High School or an undergraduate who is an alumni of a Carroll County High School. There's some different requirements, but it's a thousand dollar scholarship available in each of the guidance counselors' offices at all the high schools. And then there's copies that'll be available here. That one is not due until August 1st and it's for a local nonprofit.
It's for local nonprofit?
It's organized by, not for the local nonprofit, it's organized.
What's the nature of the, of the scholarship, like what are they looking for?
They're, the criteria is, you have to have a three point O, be accepted or attending. The requirements are, because this is a memorial scholarship in honor of someone, you have to be involved in a organization that that person was involved in. So either the 4-H program or FFA or fire department. And they're looking for a introduction essay and then a little second essay or brochure type thing.
Okay. I think that works, that's good information. And then what, I'm just taking notes, what, where's our scholarship stand, our Charlotte?
I have copies right here for the community.
Okay.
It was due May 1st, so.
Very good. Councilman Shelley?
The sustainability committee meets on May 18th at 10 o'clock in the morning here at the town hall and we are still working on our strategic plan. In regard to the Manchester Immunity Association, unfortunately, my work schedule precludes me from attending the meetings. I do the best to keep everybody up to date, but I have nothing to report right now.
Okay. Councilman Howe?
We have a few activities planned by the nature center on Sunday, this Sunday, the fifteenth, from one to three P.M. At the nature center is a plant swap. You can bring a plant, take a plant, or you can give like a five dollar donation and take a plant or two from that. There will also be master gardeners on hand to answer questions and a lovely white elephant table with some gently used items if you choose to go that way. The second thing is that they're sponsoring a photo contest and the deadline for submission of photos is September the 30th. And instructions and applications are available here in the town office, at the North Carroll Library or the North Carroll Senior Center. The other thing that is scheduled is botchi, the botchi tournaments. The dates are June 18th, July 16th, and August 20th. And you can either go on charlottesquestnaturecenter.com or call 401-374-6193, the nature center for details. And on a separate note that has nothing to do with that, I just want everybody to know that the road dedication for Lieutenant Howe and Jason Sn, Officer Snyder, has been approved. Part of Route 30 will be dedicated to them, they will not have the same signs since they did not die in the same incident. But they're looking for places, so hopefully we'll have the unveiling in a few weeks when the signs are, are put up. And since they, for those of you who don't know, they've been, my husband was a Baltimore County SWAT commander, we've lived here for thirty-some years. And there's still six SWAT officers from Baltimore County that live here, so when there's a call out, it's like, bie, 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 down Route 30 every day. And Officer Snyder was shot and killed three years ago during the service of a warrant. And so it's, you know, and again, has lived here all of his life, so we're going to dedicate Route 30 to them for the, since they were Manchester residents.
Can you also give us the date of dedication when you find out, or like Kelly, just to put it out?
Yes, we, I will let you know the, the dedication, actually, they do an unveiling, so that's all that they will do. So we'll do a dedication and get the media involved in it and I will let everybody know when it is.
Okay.
Hopefully, maybe next week, I think it's National Police Week, so we were trying to get for that. I'm finished.
You, you think the unveiling will be next week?
I was hoping, but I don't know. They said it usually moves pretty quickly, they're looking for where to place them now.
Okay. Yeah, let everybody know so that we can get as many people there and on, as possible, get, get on their schedules and, and promote that.
As soon as they, they let me know, the transportation lets me know, I'll let you all know.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, I'm done.
Good, and, and good work on that, I'm glad that, that's a, that's a couple years in the making.
Yeah, it's been a long, two years.
Yeah. Councilman Walter?
Okay, last month, planning and zoning meeting, in addition to the regular general business, we had two items for review. First was Number One North Liquors came to present their concept plan for the new building, which will be right down the block from here. I had a few concerns, some questions for them to go back and research. The way they want to design the road is because there's a utility pole on the corner, they wanted to create an island where there would be a ramp would go onto the street over here. See what's the name of that road right there?
Wood Drive.
Wood Drive. So they had some plans for how they would enter that street, whether it's one-way, two-way, some of the way the parking was, and then their loading dock. So we just had some questions, so they'll be coming back with more ideas, but they did present that plan, so that's, that's ongoing, so there'll be more on that. And next was Premier Dental presented plans for some new signage they want, they want to put a swirl on the side of the building and then some signage with their name. Some, some code enforcement, some code issues we have to contend with, so they're going to come back again with more ideas. So those two will be more to come. And then we've kind of postponed, we put off a lot of discussions on the comprehensive plan because of all the issues going on with the board of education and the schools. But we're going to probably resume those conversations, probably, I think, end of this month, we'll start having more, more work sessions again. So again, more to come on that.
And there was no more discussion on the one we talked about the other day behind Charmel Southwestern?
Old Town, they will be coming to our next meeting next week to again, present more information on that, because we sent them off last time they presented.
Right.
To come back with some more ideas.
I just didn't know if they came yet to this one, that's why.
I can meet to the next meeting next week.
Okay.
Next Tuesday is the next planning and zoning.
Okay.
Thank you for reminding me, because I was, I've forgotten my notes.
Out of curiosity, the Number One North, how are they, that does sound kind of weird with an island with like a...
Apparently, there's a utility pole that's be very, very costly to reroute all the, Steve can probably explain better, but there are so much that's part of that pole where all the, it all goes, be very costly.
And that, that, Wood Alley is already one-way, right? That's one-way in, off of Main Street?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But there was ideas making it right in, right out, and they've had a couple different ideas, so.
Are, are they envisioning that where it's like, they have parking on like half the lot or like front or back?
Right now, their latest plan was moving the building toward the front and have the parking in the back, as opposed to offset it, setting it back with parking in front.
Okay.
They had a couple different designs in the very beginning, but now they're, they're settling on the up front, parking in the back, and then along that road.
What's, with the last that we saw on Old Town, are they, are they coming, are, are they more on the path of trying to come out Route 30 somewhere around Colt Runners? Or are we looking at that intersection like at Maple Grove?
They're coming back with plans for how they're going to enter right, not far from Premier Dental.
Correct.
Does it intersect with Maple Grove where we can make that a four-way?
I think that was the occasion, the P and Z board gave the group, you know, hey, you gotta come up with a better idea.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not on P and Z, but just, you know, and I think it's probably to the, I know you guys live near me, but it wouldn't affect you as much probably as people that live in Manchester Farms and where I live. But just for safety of that intersection, I think that's probably, that's my opinion, I'm not on P and Z, that, you know, I, I think having some sort of zigzag across the highway there is probably not great.
And that was a concern that P and Z expressed, so they're going to come back with new ideas next, next meeting.
Okay, yes, we'll talk more about that.
Thank you.
Andrew, have anything for us?
Yeah. May 23rd, the school is having the chorus concert and art show at sets. May 19th is academic letter and gold bar ceremony for students who have, who have been on honor roll or straight A's for, for semesters, I believe. And June 2nd for seniors is their last day. That is all I have. Graduation is somewhere here.
Yeah.
Yeah, eleven. And 15th is last day for the underclassmen.
And then Manchester Valley had a couple of county champions?
Oh, yeah, that is correct, um, softball won the county champs for first time and lacrosse won county championship for third time in a row. Hopefully, they can win states again, along with other sports teams.
Are, are they undefeated still this year?
Who, lacrosse?
Lacrosse?
They lost one game.
That boys or girls, have you already said?
It's girls.
I should know.
It's gotta be girls.
Sure know.
You know, I'm sitting here, three of us with pens and papers and everything.
I know.
Just, just in for paper and product, oh man, I'm, I'm technically logically a cow.
I thought the same thing.
Yeah, I'm somewhere between where I do half it here and half it here. We have anything else for, for this group? We'll entertain a moting, a, a motion to adjourn the general session and move to a closed meeting pursuant to state government article three, three oh five B seven to talk to legal counsel on a legal matter.
I make a motion that we close the general meeting for our closed meeting in regards to the legal matter.
I'll second the motion.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good night.